Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting for Monday, September 12th. Please join me in standing for the invocation to be given by Bishop Carr. Amen. Thank you, Bishop. Yeah? Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my hand.
Please be seated. Good evening, one more time. Welcome council, staff and members of the audience to the council meeting for Monday, September 12th, 2022. Time is 7:02. For the record, we have all seven council members present and we have call. The first item is introduction of new employees, Charlie Gooden, Parks Maintenance Technician. Good evening JD.
All right. Good evening Mayor and Council. My name is John Douthat. I am the Parks and Facilities Director for the town of Sunnyvale. This is Charlie Gooden. He is our newest Park Maintenance Technician. He just joined our team three weeks to a month ago. He comes to us from Addison, Texas with quite a bit of experience in Parks Maintenance and we're really glad to have him. Help me welcome him to our team.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is announcement. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551, dot 0415, Mayor and Council and staff may report on various items listed on the agenda. Council, other announcements?
Mayor had one.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, sir. Yesterday, nine eleven, something we don't remember all the time and just we're a day late on that, but just wanted to bring that to attention that we never forget nine eleven.
Staff, Jeff, you have anything? Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the announcement. Moving on to the public comments. This is the time. Members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any items other than personnel or legal matters or items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. No one is coming forwards. We're going to close the public comments. Moving on to the presentation section of the agenda. I have a presentation. This is proclamation declaring September 17th, 2022 through September 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week in the town of Sunnyvale. So let me read the proclamation, Office of the Mayor. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week and now therefore be proclaimed that I, Sajid George, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23th of 2022 as the Constitution Week in the town of Sunnyvale and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained and in witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed here to this the 20th day of September 2022. Can I ask, come forward?
Barbara Thomas.
Yeah, Thomas or Barbara Thomas.
Okay, next item. We'd like to recognize this is the recognition of Sally Moll for endless support and donations to the town's annual Sunny Fest event. JD, please step forward. Is Sally here today?
Can you hear me?
Ah, I see her hiding in the back. Ms. Moll, come forward, please. The town of Sunnyvale and the Parks Department and the Special Events Division would like to recognize you for your years of service and partnership with the town of Sunnyvale for Sunny Fest. Without your contributions and effort, it would not be the event it is today and we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Anybody that ever asked me, the first thing I did in Sunnyvale was Sunny Fest. Jim Wade made me feel like I was a part of this community from Sunny Fest, so it really means a lot to me. We hadn't lived here but maybe a year and I thought, how am I going to get involved? How am I going to get in this town? And it was Sunny Fest that did it for me. I love it.
Hold on, another picture. I think we need Peter also. So we have one more recognition for tonight. Our final recognition is of Parks Employee Carlos Flores. JD, come up Carlos. As you can tell by the response, everyone know who's really runs the Parks Department. Carlos has been an employee for going on 15 years now, serving the citizens of Sunnyvale and the Parks and Facilities Department. Oh, about a month ago, when we suffered our worst heat wave that we've had in a while, while Carlos was working at Town Center Park, there was a senior citizen and his daughter attempting to walk the trail. It was about 104 outside and that gentleman was struggling just to get to a picnic bench to sit down. His daughter was not strong enough to help him and Carlos noticed this, went over to the gentleman, picked him up, carried him across the parking lot all the way to his car so that his daughter could take him to the emergency room. And I witnessed all this, wondering what was going on and then I figured out that Carlos was just being Carlos and attempting to help someone in need. So we really appreciate you Carlos and all your efforts. Glad to have you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items. Council, you have item number five, six, seven and eight on consent agenda. Does anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have motion to approve consent agenda items five through eight as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda items five through eight as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Eldridge. All in favor signify. Call of post motion pass. Seven off. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, item number nine. Call a public hearing, discuss and consider and act upon the first reading of ordinance 2022-25, amend in the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan by changing the future use of the approximately 8.8 acres on Highway 80 frontage from the front of the property roughly 1,400 feet from the town right away from medium density residential and floodplain open space to employment. Philip, good evening.
Good evening Mayor and Council. The town's existing future land use plan was adopted as part of the town's comprehensive plan in 2017. It's important to remember that the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan are separate from zoning districts. The purpose of the comprehensive plan and future land use plan are to provide general guidance on broad goals and direction for future development in the town. Zoning decisions should be guided by the comprehensive plan and future land use plan and zoning provides more specific tools to regulate that development. The town is currently considering a request to rezone approximately 38 acres located at southeast corner of Long Creek Road and Highway 80 Frontage Road. As part of the request, the town has been asked to review the appropriateness of the town's comprehensive plan and specifically the future land use plans designation of the area as medium density residential. The current property owner and proposed developer believe the site is more suited for commercial and would fall under the employment commercial use category on the future land use plan. The specific zoning request is the subject of a separate agenda item, but staff would recommend considering an amendment to the comprehensive plan and future land use plan prior to considering this specific development request. The comprehensive plan describes the medium density residential use designation on the future land use plan as being a transition zone between large lots, single family neighborhoods and commercial development. With land on the other side of the existing open space and floodplain, there's more than enough buffer for the properties along Larkin Road. The comprehensive plan describes the employment commercial designation of the future land use plan as being representative of commercial and office uses that provide employment opportunities. These uses are most suitable along the US Highway 80 corridor. This property fronts that US Highway 80 corridor. In reviewing alternative land use designations for the future land use plan, staff does not believe that additional residential development is appropriate in the area given the property is, given that the property is cut off from any other town right of way except for US Highway 80. Another consideration for determining future land uses is the current land uses in proximity to the area and along the same corridor. To the west of the site, at the corner of Long Creek Road and US Highway 80, the property is a zone highway commercial. South are property zone SF4 but are cut off from accessibility due to the existing floodplain and would be hard to reach. East is a property fronting Highway 80 with SF3 and SF4 zoning districts and north of the property is Highway 80 and more land zone highway commercial. Based on the land use categories in the comprehensive plan, adjacent land uses and site limitations, staff agrees that the most appropriate designation is employment commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Let me open up for public comments on item number nine. If there's anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number nine, you may come forward at this time. No one is coming forwards. We're going to close the public comments. Council, questions or discussions?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Hi, Mr. Egan.
This may be applicable to either this item or the next item, which is both part of the same thing and it may be directed to Philip and/or the town engineer. What assurance does the town have that the floodplain property can be maintained appropriately so that we don't have backup water conditions? It's going to back up to Highway 80, but I believe that's also the same tributary that comes right through the backside of Town Hall. And we know the problems that we had at Trip that we've somewhat alleviated, but because that piece of land is now captured within the PD, this might be an opportune, an opportune time to get some assurance to the town as to how that floodplain area would be maintained?
Okay, yes, sir. I'll go ahead and take that. Excuse me. That area, as you said, is floodplain. It is mapped floodplain per FEMA's special flood, excuse me, FEMA's flood insurance rate map designation. Apologies. The town does have development requirements in place for any future development in the floodplain regardless of what the nature of that development might be. And if something like that was to be proposed, we would review it and we would ensure that whatever development was to take place, there would be done in such a way as to not cause any increases in 100-year water service elevations at any point upstream or downstream or any negative impact on adjacent properties. In addition, if the conditions or if the developer warranted it, they would have to submit to FEMA to get a letter of map revision, but we would have to look at it at the time to see if it warranted that or not. I hope that helps.
Thank you, law. And I agree and concur with where you're going. My reason for my question is not necessarily today, but my crystal ball is broken. I don't know what's going to happen in the future. And with that being designated SF4, and in fact, I've walked that area before back when the Bedford's on the adjoining property. It's been a few years, but I know that's significantly rough terrain, if that's such a phrase that can be used. But I don't know what might happen in the future, particularly with the SF4 being there as well as a future possible owner of the property. So I was just looking for if there was any way that we could get a, you know, today it's not financially feasible, but that doesn't mean somebody goes up and digs a big hole in downtown Dallas and finds a place to put dirt to get it out of the floodplain. So I was just looking for maybe some lock and maybe there's not one. Brenda, you could, you could impart your wisdom there too.
So your current town ordinances are adequate to provide and ensure that proper procedures are followed, as is the Corps of Engineers process. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about it. There are communities that do not allow floodplain reclamation because they're, they want to preserve those waterways. That's always an option that you have. That's always an option that you have, but it's not an ordinance that the town has in place at this point in time.
Is there a way that we can attach anything to that effect into the PD?
I would not recommend it.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
Counsel, additional questions or discussions on this topic?
I have a question. I know that we had talked about this briefly in, uh, in a meeting, that there's going to be some changes when they go back and redo eighty. Is East Fork corner of the roads that's going to be affected by that? Didn't they talk about putting an additional overpass somewhere?
Uh, yes, sir. When Highway eighty gets reconstructed, um, right now today, of course, East Fork Road comes down from the north. Then you have a, a bridge that's located somewhat to the east of where East Fork Road ends. That bridge is scheduled to be removed from its current location and reconstructed in a point that it's in a straight alignment with East Fork Road. So the residents accessing Highway eighty from East Fork would just simply, uh, use a conventional interchange to get onto the highway. Uh, that would in turn entail some revisions to the frontage road of the highway. And, uh, any additional right of way that Tech Dot would need for that should have already been acquired by Tech Dot prior to now.
Counsel, question, Mr. Freeman?
Uh, not necessarily a question, but a comment. Um, we talk about floodplanes. It seems as if lately floodplanes have been a problem. I mean, we've, we, we have people who build in floodplanes and, you know, when we have new developments that are trying to keep from adding to that problem, seems like things haven't necessarily gone well from, you know, from, uh, major housing developments. So I, I just, I'm curious about, you know, adding another area that we can build in a floodplain given that it hasn't always worked out well for us in the past. That's just a concern of mine on this particular thing.
Are you looking for an answer or a position or just a?
Just a concern that I have.
Philip, I have, I think I shared this comment with you earlier, right? The proposed uh, change in the land use diagram. So if you look at the picture on the right side, the yellow, almost like a, a pie, a piece of pie, right? So the, the issue I have is a compatibility. Now, if you make that as a highway commercial, we basically separated that or isolated that residential area by itself. Is that a compatibility issue at that time? If you look at the picture here, so the, the lower rectangle is currently the yellow color. That's a medium residential. So that's contiguous residential area. But by extending that rectangle, now we basically cut off that, the right side.
So.
We're putting a highway commercial, I believe that area is around thirteen point two acres. That's the, the yellow area on the right side. SF four means about half an acre, I think roughly. So we're talking about, I don't know, ten, twenty houses maximum. Can you comment on the compatibility concern?
Well, that is exactly why this item is on your agenda this evening. Is that, um, before you consider a, a specific application, you're required to consider from a long-range planning standpoint whether the requested change meets the community's goals and objectives. So that's really something that you all have to decide in your legislative capacity. Um, from a planning standpoint, um, I would rely on Philip and his expertise. I'm gonna try and stay in my lane. Um, I, you know, I always have an opinion, but I'd rather not do that this evening.
Yeah. So the, respect that, completely respect that. So from, my concern is different, right? On the right side, right? So we are, so somebody owns that thirteen point two acres, so somebody or maybe multiple people own the property. I don't know. So we basically remove, um, we basically, at least looks like to me, um, lock them up. I don't know if that's the right word or not. We basically put it highway commercial on the side. I, I don't know they can access Highway eighty or not at this time.
So let me ask Philip a question. Philip, is that triangle just the, the commercial part or does that include the part of the PD that would be residential?
So that is a separate property, that, that triangle to the, to the right?
No, I'm talking about the red rectangle. Is that also part of the property that the back of it would be residential?
No, the, the existing floodplain that's designated there would be part of the, the SF four sub-district.
Okay, gotcha. All right. I was thinking maybe, um, the future land use plan wouldn't need to be amended all the way to the back, but you're saying that all of that would be intended to be commercial?
Uh, I would have to go back and check and check the meets and bounds and make sure that that would go up next to it.
Okay.
So my understanding is that rectangle, it says proposed, that is the, that will be added to the rectangle above that, make it seventeen some acres. And that's gonna be the, the next agenda. Below that, I think the plan is to keep the SF four. But my concern is on the right side, that pie. So I just don't know allowing this proposed land use is the right thing because of compatibility issue. That's just my concern.
And that's the very question before you this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fitz.
I believe, and I'd like some clarifications, if you look at the next, if you look at the next item on the agenda, that proposed portion, I believe, is still wanting to stay SF four, correct?
Yeah, but we have to do this.
I know, but it is.
So that was my question.
Yeah, right. I understand. That's what I'm trying to push to.
I don't know that the entire property would be employment.
No, ma'am.
That's, so really the back portion of that rectangle or that rectangle would and should remain medium density residential?
Yes, the, the back portion of that property will remain that.
So what's depicted here is a bit different from the zoning application that's prompting the request?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So let me, let me make sure I understand it, right? The rectangle above, there's a block for it's proposed. Rectangle above that, I think that is currently highway commercial, correct? No change requested. That's already highway commercial.
The, the rectangle above the proposed section?
Yeah.
Yes.
This section here.
Yes.
So this one.
Yes, the, the black.
No.
Yes.
This one, I think the, the next agenda, and now we are talking two different things. I believe the, so this is the application to change the land use diagram from medium density to to.
Employment commercial.
The next one, I believe, is to change this to, from high, medium density to highway commercial in the zoning.
But not the entire property? The back part of it?
This will be, I think this will be highway commercial. This will be.
Is that correct, Philip?
Yes.
Okay. So everything that's shown in red is intended to be commercial?
Yes, and then the, the rest of the property would be intended to be SF four.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
On the next.
Additional discussions or comments? Mr. Freeman?
Okay, so if this was not changed, the proposed would be that same yellow color, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so are, I mean, are we talking, is this the same landowner? Is this someone different? Are they trying to? Cause my concern is if we're allowing, if we allow this, then we basically cut off what would be, fully be used for medium density residential. And we're cutting off a section and we're basically cutting it off from the other section, which means it's no longer part of the neighborhood. It's a little different. Um, and if that's a different landowner, that could, you know, cause some definite issues for maybe something that they were planning on doing or might have planned on doing in the future. And we could be putting them in a very interesting situation. So, I mean, does, is that, does that come into play at all here? I mean, is this someone who's like, hey, I'm just gonna break up my particular property and put it right here? Or is it, you know, could they be putting someone else in a, in a different set or another less desirable situation by putting this on their property and putting someone else in a bad situation?
I, I think the property proposed belongs to the, who are the property owner making the request. But by, but if council allows this one, then the, the slice on the right side, the pie shape, I think that becomes a compatibility issue unless they want to come and ask for it, but we don't know the answer for that. Mr. Eldridge?
So, so I understand some, Mayor, are you saying that your concern is that we're dividing up residential on the left hand and the right hand side by doing this?
It's a compatibility issue, yes.
Compatibility issue. But we're leaving the back part of this property SF four still?
Yeah, but that's, yes, you're right. But that's, that's still a floodplain, right? I'm talking about still that pie shape only.
True. I mean, this is gonna be an issue no matter what you do, cause that back part of that property is floodplain. No one could ever really build there.
I don't know the answer for that, right?
I mean, I've seen it. It's floodplain. It's all floodplain.
Yeah, 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 I respect that, right?
Yeah, so I mean, it's always gonna be broken up no matter what you do, cause no one's ever gonna have continuation of homes down floodplain.
See, I'm talking about here, right? Right now, this is our medium density. Right now, that once you make it highway commercial, then we split it.
I, I would suggest that from a long-range standing, planning standpoint, it looks odd. And, um, I think the larger question is whether that leftover piece should either also be highway commercial or employment or left residential. And then if it's left residential, that may give you some guidance. Remember, this, the comprehensive plan, future land use plan is a long-range planning document. Zoning applications are very short-term. So I think the discussion for you as a council is long-term. What is your vision for that sort of kidney-shaped gold area there um, below the road that kinda comes down? So I think that's the question for you tonight.
So, so from a long-range perspective, this is purely opinion, right? I, I, I can see area next to the freeways being highway commercial. From that, from that vision perspective, I can see that entire area becoming um, highway commercial or employment. But that's not the ask here. The ask is to split that into part of it. Again, I, I don't know the property owner or owners on that side. What is their plan, right?
Well, again, future land use plans are not based on the property owner's intent, bless you. Future land use plans are based on what is the community's goal?
Right.
To maximize Highway eighty for commercial development and tax value, appraised value, or to create more rooftops that may give you opportunities for additional retail restaurant kind of things.
I see, but, yeah, yeah.
What the property owner, I mean, you could, you could vote to approve this and direct the staff to bring forward a future land use plan amendment on the property adjacent to it. That's something that you could do. Um, but if, as a council, you see that in the future as residential, then my advice would be to deny the requested change. If you see it as commercial, you could direct the staff to look at the rest of that property and bring back a recommendation.
Yeah, so Brenda, I think that's a good clarification. Appreciate that. For me, again, I, I, I think that's, that's at least me thinking that highway commercial is more appropriate use on the, next to the freeway, I think, right? So the, the question is, because I know there's a second agenda right after this one, the ask is to change the zoning. So if we allow, if we change this to employment, now we are saying that, you know, that section, I like that. Then how do I deal with the next one? I know that's next one is next agenda, right? That's one part. Second part is the kidney shape, the, the pie shape on that side. If I, if council direct the staff to go look at changing that too, what's my obligation to the property owner? Do I have any or do I just go?
No, you're not changing the zoning. You're looking at it as community objectives long-term. But you're, you're not. You don't have an, I mean, I would consult the property owner and see if they have plans for development or it, they may see it as commercial or they may say, hot diggity dog, now I can do what I was gonna do. I mean, we don't know. But absent looking at a bigger picture in that area, I think to approve this looks a little odd.
So just to be clear, management, so knowing there are two agenda items, right? One is the vision, which is the land use diagram.
Right.
So even if the council approves it, that doesn't necessarily mean we had to approve the next PD.
That is correct. So here's what, here's what the case law says. The case law says, uh, we have a statute that says cities must, uh, zone in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Courts have differed on whether the comprehensive plan is absolute or a guide. The way that I have reconciled those cases is as follows. If you approve this request, you can approve or deny the next item. If you do not approve this request, you should not approve the next item.
So let me ask the third case. So if we approve this, basically I, we can, if we deny it, I'd be giving the wrong impression to the applicant.
If you deny this.
If you approve this, if you approve this one, that means you're saying that, okay, vision perspective, I like employment there. I get that. That's my vision. That's just an idea. I don't own the property, right?
Right.
Now if I come back and now they say, hey, can I have the PD to approve this one? If I deny that, or, or?
You have the full ability to deny a zoning case. Even if you make this change and direct the staff to take a look at that and you guys have a conversation about what you think of future land use, what you wanna see that as in the future. Okay, so you, I mean, you have all kinds of options tonight. You can table this item and ask the staff to look at comprehensively at that area and make recommendations and bring back the broader question before you take up the zoning case. So you can table the zoning case. Um, it's not like Platts where you have thirty days and the shot clock's running. You have all the time you need to make a decision on this issue. And if you wanna make it in a broader context, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Counsel, additional questions or discussions? Mr. Freeman?
The, the only thing that I will, that I will add to this discussion is that I, I remember when they started, when everyone was going through the future planning and putting the, the future land use plan together. Since then, we've actually had a couple of businesses that have gone in along that road that have actually, you know, been fairly successful. So I don't know if anyone would have had the thought that maybe that would have happened. So, I mean, I would say that, you know, definitely going back and relooking at the future land use plan might be something worth doing and seeing if that's still something that we, we like or we don't like. Um, because again, when they came up with this, there were no businesses there. They've since put businesses there and.
Did they put business on the proposed area or the one before that?
The, 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 uh, maroon area above.
That's already highway commercial. No change is required.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. But what I, what I'm saying is there weren't, when they, when this was done, there weren't businesses that were in that area that were doing well. Right? So I'm saying, I'm saying.
I, I thought, I thought there were businesses and we approved legally non-conforming. Am I right, Philip? There are businesses. There are six operations, I believe, we approved.
No, there are businesses now.
What you approved was an interim use agreement to allow them to continue to operate while they sought this zoning change. So you've done nothing with regard to the zoning on that property. I think Mr. Councilman Freeman's point is the character of the surrounding land uses has changed since the future land use map was done. And therefore, it may be appropriate to consider that that bottom area is more appropriately red than gold.
Yeah. I, I had no disagreement with, I think that's appropriate
Yeah.
use of it, right? So, so let me ask you, Philip, do we, do they have businesses in that proposed area now or that they wanted to put business there?
The proposed area now currently has one residential house on it that's been, uh, it's been abandoned for a while. Um, and I believe the applicant of the next case has. And I believe the applicant of the next case has the, is wanting to remodel and make that to their, their headquarters. Beyond that one house that's on the current SF4 zoning back there, that is all. That is all there is, is just one house.
So, they want to change it, hence the application for PD?
Yes, sir.
Right, I believe it's corporate headquarters, right? So, I know we've had discussions about trying to... Mm-hmm. We've, we've had discussions about trying to bring more businesses here.
Council, additional discussions?
So, Mayor, I just want to be clear that if we, either we, from what I hear, our options are deny it, take action, or table it. If we table it, we table everything else after it. If we deny it, we deny everything else beyond it gets denied. The only way this, that anything subsequent to this moves forward is if we approve it. I just want to make sure we understand that there are some businesses that want to be here that we're about to stop and improve this property. Because of, if we don't approve it, right? And so, this is, while I understand the discussion about the future use, and I understand that this may not be consistent, I mean, I think, Lyle, there's some work being done in that other little pie section now, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They had requested and obtained a permit to just place some fill material on that site. It's strictly placement of fill material only. No additional development of any kind is being done.
Do we know what the plan is or intent?
Uh, no, sir. I have, I have inquired. They have not made any firm decisions that they've communicated to us. It's just strictly placement of fill material only at this time.
Mr. Freeman? Mr. Freeman, did you finish?
Yes, I reserved my time.
That is formal. Mr. Freeman?
My only concern is fill material by floodzone, and have we looked at what kind of impact that's gonna have on the floodzone?
They were not allowed to place any fill material in the floodzone. The area that they've, excuse me, the area that they have a permit to work on specifically excluded all of the mapped floodplain areas.
Right, but if you put in fill, then it's going to increase floodplain areas, correct? It's going to add additional water into floodplain areas?
It should not have any impact on the floodplain areas at all. They were not allowed to enter those floodplain areas to place fill.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Mayor, I don't think this map really is definitive enough of what's in that piece of property. If you look at it on Google, there's already other businesses in that, in that area that we're talking about. I'm talking about the north part for the commercial. There's already businesses in that. So, I don't think... Forget the proposed part, the bottom triangle, forget that.
Okay.
The, the top that's north of that, there's already businesses in that.
Right.
There have been for some time, so...
Right, there are six businesses, I think.
Right, so I don't think, I don't think approving that impacts anything else south of that. That's another discussion.
You're talking about the top there are businesses, not the bottom, right?
Right.
Yeah, top is highway commercial. There's no decision there.
I just wanted to be sure we're all okay on that. So, approval of item nine is separate totally, and there's stuff there, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't have approval issues with that, I don't think. The issue is what's south of there. Is that correct? Because there's a lot of conversation about everything that's not specific to that, that piece of property there.
It is. Actually, the item number nine is on that rectangular, that should have been a yellow color box, not a red color box. Currently, it's a red color bo, yellow color box. The plan ask is to change it to red color box, the proposed area.
Somehow, this doesn't line up on Google in, in the map. They don't line up to me.
Philip, you want to add to that? The currently, what's the color on the box? Yellow?
So, currently, the, the proposed section there that is designated as employment commercial that would be subsequent to y'all's approval tonight is for medium-density residential as it exists today.
So, so again, I think Mr. Finch summarized it, right? So, we have three options. If we deny it, the next item is stopped. I don't know if that's the right approach. That's me saying. If we approve it, then there is, we gotta think about the property on the right side. If we table it, ask staff to go figure out the plan for both areas with a direction, and maybe seeking their input, and come back with it. Those are the three options. Deny it, approve it, or table it.
Mayor, can I give my two cents' worth?
Yeah, Mr. Egan, yes, sir.
Let's approve this and get on. We're getting into the weeds. That area over there is not really conducive to doing much of anything other than what the applicant is asking for. You can't build any houses up in there. If you've not been in there, you ought to go. This just needs to move forward. We don't typically approve flag lots, which is what this is. And by not doing, by not allowing flag lots keeps us out of this mess. But this one evolved that way. We just need to, you can't do anything with the south part of this piece of property, which is the left-hand side of the L. Don't worry about the kidney-shaped yellow piece. Because there's, other than maybe a slight problem with accessibility to that particular property owner, and that's a very slight piece, which can be alleviated by putting a bridge over the floodplain, which that's something he's gonna have to take into consideration. We just need to move forward on this one. We're getting into the weeds. We, we do this too often.
Fully respect that. Again, I just want to be respectful of the kidney-shaped property owner. That's it. Council, other additional discussions? If not, I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item 13 as presented.
Maybe, second. Did you mean say nine, maybe?
Nine.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Egan, second by Finch to approve item number nine as presented. Everyone, everyone heard the motion. Other additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed 6-1. In favor, Finch, Allen, Clark, Freeman, Eldridge, and Egan. Opposed, George. Moving on to item number 10. Hold a public hearing to discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance 2022-26 changing the zoning on one property totaling 38.205 acres located generally at 536 Long Creek Road and 600 U.S. Highway 80 from highway commercial and single-family to a planned development allowing for warehouse space, contractor shops, and contractor storage yard with alternative development standard. Philip?
The request before you tonight is for the property located at 536 Long Creek Road and 600 U.S. Highway 80, consisting of roughly 38 acres. The property is partially zoned highway commercial from the northern property line to roughly 700 feet back. The southern portion of the property is zoned single-family four. The property includes several existing structures that date back to as early as 1955, many of which are non-conforming. Several buildings are also currently occupied by contractor shops that are not allowed by right in the highway commercial zoning district. In May, an interim use agreement was approved by town council that allows these uses to operate on the property while the owner seeks to rezone the property. The interim use agreement will last until November 13th or until a zoning change has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission Town Council. The property butts, butts vacant land zone, single-family three and single-family four to the east, single-family four to the south, with a roughly 100-plus-foot-wide property uses a transmission line as well as residential homes that front Larkin Road. The property fronts U.S. Highway 80 on the north side of the property with a variety of both undeveloped and developed commercial and single-family four properties to the west. Applicant's current request is to rezone the property from highway commercial and single-family four to a planned development district with two sub-districts. The two sub-districts being requested are highway commercial and single-family four. The highway commercial sub-district would extend from the front of the property to roughly 1,400 feet back. This area would allow for all allowable uses by right within the highway commercial zoning district as amended. In addition to these uses, contractor shops, contractor storage yard, and warehouse would also be allowed. The three of these uses are allowed by special use permit currently. However, the applicant is requesting that these uses to be allowed by right within the highway commercial sub-district. Warehouses would allow for the storage of personal and commercial products. The applicant is proposing to market this as a personal warehouse facility lending itself to the storage of personal goods and flex office space. Storage of commercial goods would still be allowed for businesses that wanted to use the space as such. The buildings shown on the concept plan are 8,000 square feet in size, separated into tenant spaces. If these tenant spaces were separated equal, they would be roughly 1,300 square feet in size. At the time of each tenant finished-out location, and the size of each unit would be determined. The single-family four sub-district would be located at the southern portion of the property as shown in the exhibit attached to the staff report. The zoning district would follow all requirements of the SF4 zoning district for any development that occurs. In addition to the establishment of sub-districts, the proposed planned development would establish a number of alternative development standards for the property. Unless otherwise specified in the PD request, the general requirements the UDO would apply. The following are the requests from the applicant for the highway commercial sub-district. The applicant is requesting that businesses be allowed to front onto mutual access drives rather than fronting directly onto town right-of-way. This would allow for rear facades, buildings to be facing towards U.S. Highway 80 that north. Currently, the, the contractor storage yard does not require screening. The applicant is requesting that this be added to the PD. So, all outside storage of contractor shops would follow the same method required for normal outdoor storage as defined in the town's unified development ordinance. The applicant is requesting that painted steel doors and split face or honed CMU be allowed for the dumpster enclosures. Currently, the UDO requires that masonry screening for dumpsters and enclosures, which is defined as brick or stone unless otherwise noted, exposed or paint, cement, concrete, or cinder blocks, stucco, fiber cement siding, or other materials of similar characteristics shall not be considered as masonry unless otherwise noted. After the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, the applicant has proposed to provide all articulation requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance on the proposed building closest to Highway 80 frontage. The applicant, upon the request from the Planning and Zoning Commission, has also proposed a shared parking lot of 28 spaces at current regulations for the seven existing buildings in the highway commercial zoning district on the property. These existing buildings are a total of roughly 27,000 square feet and will be parked at a ratio of one space per 970 square feet. Staff distributed letters to each property owner within 200 feet of the subject property and received no responses. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on August 17th, 2022, and voted seven in favor and zero against to recommend approval for the sub, approval subject to the following. One, no residential shall be allowed in the highway commercial sub-district. The applicant is to provide a shared parking lot with a minimum of 28 spaces for the existing buildings being operated currently in the highway commercial zoning district. And three, provide all articulation requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance on the proposed building closest to the Highway 80 frontage. Staff recommends approval, subject to council's findings, all recommendations the Planning and Zoning Commissioner met. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip, we have the applicant here. Would you like to come forward and speak to the council? Dear gentlemen. Just state your name and address for the record, please. State your name and address, sorry.
Okay.
Much better.
Justin Rugiano, 140 Brentwood.
Here, Justin.
Derek Salser, 345 New Hope Road, Sunnyvale.
Do you want to add anything to it? Anything else you want to add?
A couple of things that are holdovers from that previous slide. Can we go back to the slide for the previous case? Yeah. Where you've, where it's green, just to the south of where the property is we're talking about tonight, that looks like it's different zoning, but that's really SF4 all the way around the property. Just because it's green doesn't mean it's not SF4. Because you were thinking it was cutting off the little pie shape. It's not cutting off the pie shape. That's just the way that map is drawn, right, Philip?
So, in the, in the most recent update to the UDO, there was a, a change in the, the zoning districts for our, our zoning map. We used to have a floodplain zoning district, and that has since been taken off of the, the use chart. And so, that is, I, I'm reluctant to say that I don't know the zoning.
Okay. Well, I was, my point was, you can get to that little pie shape around the horn of Justin's property if you needed to. It's not cut off like I think we were thinking of it being cut off. There are homes all around this property to the south on Larkin Road and, and even to the, to the west of the property. So, it's not as if somebody can come in there and do an SF4 subdivision and build medium-density homes everywhere. There's just not room. And it's not feasible, in my opinion, as a developer, to even put homes of any kind on the back portion of the property. And the only reason we're leaving it SF4 is because it's already zoned SF4. And that was the recommendation of the, of the town development director at the time. Also, from watershed perspective, the new portion that we're wanting to, to change to highway commercial, a lot of it is on the front side of the slope. If you know that site has a lot of topography, as you come up from 80, it slopes up to the top of the hill where the house is. And where that house is, is part of what we're including in the highway commercial zoning, because Justin and Ryan are turning that house into their corporate headquarters. So, all the water that falls on that property, not all of it goes back to the creek. It's going back towards Highway 80. So, I didn't want you to think that development on this new section of highway commercial is gonna affect the creek. And I don't think there's, there's any plan to build anything in the floodplain, ever, or reclaim it.
So, council, any questions for the applicant at this time?
I have a question. Could you go back to the next slide? Or the, no, I'm sorry, the, the slide of that, this one. The, the only concern that I have with what I'm seeing here is the top bullamoid there. It says that there, the rear facade would actually be facing towards the highway.
Do you have that planned, Philip?
Yes, if you, if you go to the next slide, there should be, keep on going. Keep going. That one. Go one more. It should be a zoomed-in section there.
So, these buildings are not even as wide as this room that we're in, just to give you perspective. I mean, he said the word warehouse. These aren't warehouses. These are small, little, personal-use flex spaces. If that's the technical definition, then, you know, when I think of a warehouse, I think of the, the big state food or Marazzi or the new places over here on 80. These are buildings that stair-step up the hill because the topography, you can't build a massive building because it's so steep, the grade. So, we have these small 8,000-square-foot buildings that are kind of terraced into the side of that hill going up, culminating at the top. I don't know if you have a picture, Philip, of what they're doing to the existing house, but they've already put new stone on it and a new metal roof on the house at the top of the hill, which will be their corporate headquarters. So, to your point, Jonathan, the backs, there will be... But they're screening each other on the way up the hill. The one, the building at the very bottom, the yellow building closest to eighty, that's the one at the P and Z hearing that Justin agreed to make that the prettiest building on the campus with all the articulations that the UDO requires. So, that's going to be the front doors. You're driving by, that's the first building you see, and it's going to meet all the requirements of the UDO.
Any additional questions, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, so, but, you know, as you said, that it does kind of tier up. So, as it's going up, you're going to be seeing the front of the building there and the front of the building there, just by nature of the way it works.
And they're screened, all the yards that potentially could be around these buildings are screened, like Philip was saying. So, we don't want it to be, if you're concerned about it being ugly, that is the, we do not want that.
Yeah, no, that's, that is absolutely my concern. I mean, I think that, you know, there are certain things off that highway that are big kind of eyesores, and we definitely don't want this to become that.
Oh, no. I think you've seen what they've done with the existing buildings already. Look a hundred times better than they did, just being cleaned up and painted. And then, the building at the top is got a total extreme makeover that's already been done to it. If you haven't been by it, take a drive up there.
No, I've definitely seen it.
That's the quality that they're talking about.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Yegar?
So, these are going to be flat-roofed buildings?
No, they're not planned to be flat-roofed, pitch-roofed.
They'll be a pitch-roof?
Yes.
So, as they're going uphill, you'll be able to see some texture, which was the whole reason for getting articulation into the UDO and that, what we used before that, was getting that articulation in so we don't have these bricks sitting out in the, you know, whether it be, well, in, in these commercial buildings. And I have seen some of what they're doing over there, but that doesn't mean that row buildings like this, there's not, there's symmetry, but there's not, what art, there's not what articulation brings, if you get.
I think the, I think the elevation change is going to help us because these aren't just buildings lined up in a row. They're terraced up the hill and they're staggered. It's going to be more interesting than maybe that plan.
Yeah, maybe this is more proposal level than reality level.
Yeah, that's, these buildings aren't designed yet. This is just an exhibit to show.
Concept.
Concept, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Clark?
So, are the, the parking lots there, are those going to be flat also? Are they going to be tiered also? You know?
Well, there's going to be retaining walls, and the parking will be flat as it steps terraced down.
Okay. And then, the building at the top next to the existing home, is that going to be the same style? They'll match?
That's the same style, and this is in phases. I don't know what Justin's plan is, how many he wants to do at once, but they may just be one or two at a time as the market dictates.
Okay. And that, the existing house is going to be the corporate headquarters?
Yeah. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, we've been in business since two thousand seventeen doing multifamily construction, residential roofing, commercial roofing, and we have rented space in, in other cities as well as Sunnyvale. And now, I think it's time that, once we acquire the property, it was a very difficult property to understand when we first purchased it because right in front of that house, it was zoned residential. And so, our vision when buying it was, was to, you know, initially take over that house and office out of it, and then we realized that we had to push for this rezone in order for us to accomplish this. So, our goal is to continue our remodel, once we're allowed to permit for, and, and beautify this property to hold for a long time.
When it's the corporate headquarters, can, can you elaborate what corporates we're talking about?
Precision Reconstruction Group and Precision Roofing Group.
So, also, now, currently, I think a lot of the driveway there is gravel. Is, are there plans to actually concrete it or asphalt it, or, you know, is it to keep, keep as gravel? Is that, have you noticed about that?
You can, you can kind of make out what the new roads will be. It is currently all gravel. That will all be scraped, and, and the main drive that goes all the way up to the house will be concrete, and everything else that's around the new buildings will be concrete. The only concrete addition on what we like to call Phase One of the property will be in front of Building Two. There is sixteen spaces proposed there, as well as connecting concrete and removing all gravel to Long Creek Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Go ahead, sir.
I was going to say, there will be fire lanes and all kinds of improved paving.
I know there'll be additional questions, I have, ask some additional questions when you're done. I won't take public comments for it, if that's okay with you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, let me open up a public comment, see if there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, or write number ten, you may do so at this time. Good evening. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Brittany Curtis, five two seven Larkin Road.
Welcome.
I'm also part of this development. My personal property backs up to this, and there is a beautiful pecan orchard that actually backs up to our property, which is part of that floodplain. Our intention are just keeping it the pecan orchard as it is, bring community members in, pick pecans, create a wonderful space where our community members can come to, as well as bring some commerce to the community, and beautify a piece of property that definitely needed it. So, I appreciate your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone else like to come forward and speak to the council? Good evening, sir.
Doug Patterson, two oh five Sunray Lane, Sunnyvale. Definitely in favor of, of the proposed zoning in regards to, one, of consistency, and then one of just maintaining and the ability to support the employment in the businesses that are on the property today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comments. I have a couple of comments, Derek or Justin, both of you, if you could answer. I know there are existing properties which are legally non-compliant on, on the current Highway Commercial. I get that, I'm not, I'm not advocating to go spend a million dollars to go rebuild it, I'm not. So, looking past that one. So, the new area, new concept plan, I want, want six buildings or something planned here. So, that's the discussion area here, not the other one. So, here you have asked for, under the Highway Commercial, you asked for how, what the applicant is requesting these uses to be allowed by right in the Highway Commercial sub-district. For me, that's giving out the farm. You do what you want to do over there, everything is by right. I am not comfortable with that one. I just want you to know that one. So, understand the SUP is a painful process, and I respect that. I don't know what's the options. Again, this is not about the existing property, I'm talking about the new one. So, I, I just want to throw it out there and say, I'm not comfortable with giving out the farm with all the rights for you, or anybody for that matter, not Derek, you know, I know you for a long time, and I have respect for your developments. I just don't like that type of authority from any developer.
Are you suggesting that special use permit be required?
Yep.
And, can you, can you live with it? Every tenant that would come into these new buildings, they have to have a special use permit if they, if their use, the UDO said they needed one, instead of by right? Special use permits have to go P and Z and council, correct? Yes, it's the, the standard zoning, which is usually a sixty to ninety day process, maybe more.
I, I respect that. Again, Justin, you may be holding this property forever, but in theory, you can flip the property and somebody else may come, I can do, and everything you have in mind and everything Derek may have in mind may just go away. I, I just need to be sure on my side before I approve it, at least on my end, just one vote, right? I, I just don't feel comfortable approving that, just want to let you know that, I won't be upfront with you on that one. Additional questions or comments for the applicant?
I think, well, his concern is that small businesses won't, won't want to go through that process. It will help him, it will hurt him in his leasing efforts. So, I can see both sides. You want to make sure a use goes in there, that the, to prevent a use going in there that the town doesn't want in there, which I think we'd be on the same page, but how you can legally write that down, I don't know, or...
Any thoughts, Ms. Brenda?
We can tie the PD to a site plan, but we can't, we can't, in a, in a, in a PD, really, we don't have a crystal ball to talk about the types of tenants that may go in that property. So, I'm not sure how you would do it.
Yeah, that's exactly my concern.
Can we reduce the time needed to allow tenants to move?
Yeah, I don't know how to do that either, so. See, I know a lot of inside.
There's a statutory process that has to be followed.
What, can you put a timeframe, like twelve months or twenty-four months? With, by right, then after that, it has to be, come before this body to be re-approved or re-upped, otherwise you have to go for special use permit from there on out?
I think, honestly, that would be an administrative nightmare. I don't, I don't even know how the staff would monitor that, so I would, I would say PDs are unique individual zoning ordinances in and of themselves, and to put a provision like that in, it would be very difficult.
All right, I, I just want to get my arms around this. So, what they're proposing is personal storage. So, what we're concerned about is...
That's a possible use, a possible, a possible use.
A possible use.
Like a man cave, if you just wanted to have a, your project car in there and have a little...
Okay, and to have like a, a TV and a...
Sure.
Okay, got it.
Nothing, nothing, nothing is fixed at this time, but I, it's just one off the...
No, it's all, it's all flexible.
Okay. So, what we're concerned about is the possibility of someone coming in and saying, okay, I'll lease the space from you, but I want to put in a mini office, or I want to put in this, or I want to put in that. That's what we're concerned about at this point?
Yeah, even, even warehouses, you know, we, we, we have consents about warehouses along Highway eighty, and we push that back in other cases, so, just to...
The base, the base zoning in the PD is Highway Commercial.
Can you give Justin an example of a use that would require a special use permit?
A vape shop.
A vape shop? I know a gas station, fuel center. Know that. Any, any other ones? Philip's got his laptop over there, he's...
Liquor store?
There's a bunch.
What about contractors?
would be some kind of compromise? Is there something that you have in your bag of tricks that would help us?
So, I think we can go one of two ways. We can either say specifically that the following uses are permitted and all other uses would be by SUP, or we could identify undesirable uses that you would not want on the property. But, other than that, I don't know how we would address specific uses. Right now, the world of HC uses in the land use chart, with or without SUPs, are all available. So, unless you go through that list and take out the ones you don't want, or unless the applicant identifies the ones they do want, I don't, I mean, I think those are your two options.
Should we, just administratively asking about this process, could we approve this pending a list? I'm just trying to figure out how we move forward, or we... Right, between the first and second reading, could we say, could we approve it pending a list and second reading come up, have the list attached, working with the applicant?
So, yes, you can do that. I would not put the second reading on the consent agenda, and I would hold an, I would probably open up the public hearing again.
That way, it keeps the process going, but we can work with the applicant to come up with, and not staff, and come up with a reasonable list that we'd be okay with, that would be fully required.
And it would have to be incorporated into the PD ordinance.
Perfect.
Is that too much to ask for you, from me?
I think that's creative, I like that.
We want to work with you at the same time, we want to protect the town's interests, that's all, which you are part of the town anyway, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, Brenda, I think the process we talked about is we approve. Do we put any conditions, or we just approve it?
You would make a motion to approve it, you would vote on that motion, you would direct the applicant between the first and second reading to meet with the staff and come up with either one of those options, prohibited or permitted. That would be then incorporated, and you would consider it on second reading. So, unlike most of your first and second readings, the second reading on this particular ordinance would be substantive.
Got you, got you. So, council, if there are no additional discussions, so I think you, you heard the motion, you heard the recommendation, if you want me to repeat that, I'd be happy, I think what's, the, the, Tony's recording is that we, tell you what, I think Freeman, you're ready to go for it?
No, no, I, I just have a quick thing. Would it be better to have a list of things that we prohibit, or a list of things that they want to put in? Which one is better for us?
I think that's going to be the motion, is we can let the staff work with him to come up with the direction.
But if I'm saying, like, direction of, of prohibited things in there, or...
I would say granted would be better for us.
How about, it, it could be both, actually. It could say, these are specifically permitted, and you could name some of the things that wouldn't require an SUP, and these are specifically prohibited. So, it could be both.
So, when you do both, then there's going to be...
Yeah, I wouldn't put it in the motion, I mean, I wouldn't put it as a part of the, I would let the staff and the applicant work that out.
So, so just staff, not, don't put that in the motion for permitted and prohibited uses?
Correct.
To come up with a list, how about that, just say, come with a list?
A list of uses that...
Or council discussion.
Right, permitted and prohibited, or either. I think, I think everyone's heard what your concerns are.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Okay, council, do we have a motion? Do you have a discussion?
No, I had a motion.
Okay, so, go ahead, Ms. Allen.
We're making a motion to approve item number nine, as we've discussed, with the direction, I'm sorry, item number ten, as we've discussed, directing the staff to work with the applicant to establish a list of data, prohibited, permitted, or granted or otherwise that we can work with, and we'll leave that up to the staff and the applicant to establish that.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, and second by Mr. Clark, to approve Agenda item number ten, directing the applicant and staff to work together to come up with a list of allowed or not allowed, or a combination of uses for the subject property. Did I get that right? Everyone heard the motion? Mr. Eldridge?
He had to step out.
Okay. Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six, zero. Mr. Eldridge stepped away. Thank you, Justin, thank you, Derek, appreciate your patience. Moving on to item number eleven, hold a public hearing and... Moving on to Height Number Eleven, hold a public hearing and discuss the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed budget. That be Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and councils, we'll pull up our proposed budget presentation here. And, uh, I'll, I'll try to walk through this fairly quickly because you've seen this before, but let me provide a little bit of backdrop to the budgeting process. We started, uh, really last spring at a staff level, taking budget requests and, uh, feedback from department directors. Uh, we met with, uh, the mayor and council, uh, two different times on a kind of a long-term financial planning process, uh, as well as a budget workshop, and we discussed tax rate philosophy. Uh, we discussed the council's long-term goals, that's as illustrated in your strategic planning document, focusing on quality of life items as well as infrastructure maintenance and how best achieve them, as well as talking about, uh, what the future has to hold in terms of potential exemptions for property owners in the future uh, for consideration, and, and again, addressing some of our long-term, um, long-term capital needs. Uh, and financing those through not only cash, reserves, but debt service and even the use of tax increment reinvestment zones. And so throughout that process, one of the themes that we came away with as a staff and, and I think what we heard from council is, um, to maintain our existing, uh, tax rate, even though we knew that property valuations were increasing, uh, as they have in the past. And, uh, so that would generate additional property tax revenues. Uh, but, but leading into next spring and next budget process, I think the status quo, uh, maintenance of our existing tax rate was the direction that staff received. And so we built the budget around that, um, and, and just at a very high level, the proposed budget tonight, um, helps fund an additional two million dollars in unfunded roadway projects. It enhances our public safety services by helping reduce response times specifically for emergency medical services. And it adds some staffing, uh, in both public, uh, and public safety and public works. Uh, again, to enhance our service levels and help, um, uh, help complete some of the items in our, in our long-term strategic planning documents. So that is essentially what the budget does, and, uh, so I'll go through some of the slides here. Again, I think you've, you've seen these before, but obviously, the budget is in part built around the existing tax rate, which is proposed to remain the same at point four five three. You'll see later in our next public hearing that this is actually, there's another tax rate, the de minimis tax rate, which is higher than our existing tax rate, which was also a consideration, uh, for the council and staff, but, uh, so our proposed tax rate is about five percent, actually five point six percent above the no new revenue rate. It is, um, a ten percent below the voter approved rate, and it's actually about five point five percent below the de minimis, de minimis rate. So we'll show that here again later. So, so that is what the budget is built on. I just want to show this, make one comment on this tax rate slide, and that is if you look at the blue, um, and particularly the proposed tax rate, the blue is the maintenance and operation. Our total taxes are built on two, two components. Our debt, debt rate, uh, which you see in the yellow is the fourteen sixty-one. And the blue bar, which is the maintenance and operation. So our maintenance, maintenance and operations rate is actually being proposed at a lower level than in previous years, and then actually, it's the lowest level in ten years. And, uh, and then conversely, our debt rate is the second highest debt rate that we've had in the last ten years at fourteen sixty-one. Um, this just again, I think graphically shows where our tax rate lines up, kind of right in the middle between the voter approved rate. That's the rate that, the maximum rate you can adopt without going, uh, to the voters for an election uh, versus the no new revenue rate at the forty-two, uh, point eight five, eight five cents. Uh, this is a, just again, another line chart that really kind of shows what's been the trend in the tax rates. Uh, the blue is the total tax rate. You'll see there was an increase and then it's le- leveled off since then. Uh, the red portion of that tax rate is the maintenance and operation that really funds our, our wages, our salaries, our, um, capital expenses and contractual expenses, just day-to-day operational expenses, if you will. And you can see that, as I mentioned before, this is the lowest maintenance operation rate we've had in the last, uh, well, this only goes back to twenty eighteen, but the previous slide, it, it showed back to twenty in the last ten years, so. And then the green rate is the debt rate, and you can see the increase in debt rate. As you invest in capital improvement programs, um, particularly items that have longer life, uh, for the assets, whether they be road or equipment or capital facilities, um, you really probably want to look at a debt, debt instrument that matches the lifespan of that asset as opposed to cash reserve. So we are, we are looking at a hybrid approach in this, in the proposed twenty twenty-three fiscal year. But, but this, uh, essentially shows, um, what our, what our current tax rate as proposed in the next budget will, um, is comprised of. And then here is just the overall property tax rate, um, the two point four one cents, and that really is a combination. It's the overlapping tax rate. That is a combination of all the taxing districts, and you can see the tax rates, uh, for each of the taxing entities there in the chart. I will just note the orangish, uh, orangish piece of the pie is the town's tax rate. And I just want to comment that, that we're eighteen percent of the total tax bill. So of, 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 when people receive their tax notices, the town's portion is only eighteen percent. Most cities in North Texas average about twenty-two percent of the total tax pie. So we are, we are at least four to five percent below the average portion of a tax rate in North Texas. So although it may seem like a lot of money, in proportion, it's actually, we're, we're well below the market in what most other cities are in terms of their portion of the total tax bill. Uh, this is just things, these are things that I've already covered, so I'll skip over that slide. This shows our, our property tax rate the current year, uh, and where we stack up with some of our, some other cities, um, in our competitive set. You see, we are second to the last. Now, we'll say, this chart will change October one, other cities are adopting other tax rates. We don't have those tax rates listed because quite frankly, telegoverning body adopts the tax rate. Uh, we hate to show you a tax rate that, that may be one thing this, this week, and then next week it may be completely different. So because this is a public hearing, we're giving you the information that we know of today. Uh, certainly that will change October one, but we are, we are the second to lowest tax rate. I suspect that we will maintain that position or, or if it, if it moves, it would move very slightly. So I still think we'll be at the very bottom of that tier. This is the proposed budget, uh, at a very high-level summary, but it's also part of a five-year planning process that we began this spring, as we talked about in our long-term financial plan. I'm just flipping, flipping through to show you all that we're looking at a five-year look ahead. And this is a planning document. It is our budget, but it's also a planning document. So we can see as we adjust tax rates, as we adjust, adjust expenses, and, and as our revenues continue to change, we can see that, how, how that affects, uh, the town's finances long-term. So we are proposing a, a budget, uh, that is a balanced budget as required by state law and by charter, uh, for total, uh, revenues and expenses of twelve point three million dollars. That is, uh, revenues of, of a one point seven point nine percent increase over our current year revenues and expenses at twelve point three nine, or twelve point three four nine million dollars, which is a three point seven five percent decrease from our current budget. I do want to note that, um, there's a significant decrease in the capital outlay line item, as you see, uh, going from four point two million down to one point seven million. That is because we have funded phase one of the Damaic roadway project through the operating budget. And so that is in that capital, um, capital outlay line item. And part of this budget process, staff is recommending that we take that money out of the operating budget because it is a capital, capital type of expense, and that we put that into our capital improvement fund. And so we are showing that we are fully expending all of that money. Um, we are really just transferring that into a capital improvement fund, where it will be expensed out from the capital improvement fund. So going forward, as we look at years ahead, uh, we're looking at a five-year look ahead here. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be putting together a much longer financial plan. But you'll truly be seeing just an operating budget now, and the capital items will be, will be allocated elsewhere in the budget. So, um, this, this budget does leave us in, uh, still a very strong financial position in terms of unrestricted cash reserves. You'll see that at the very bottom, reserves over a hundred and twenty days, uh, of operating expenses, um, that are unrestricted above that amount, uh, amounts to three point seven million dollars. So, um, again, and we will discuss this on an ongoing basis with the council in terms of how we fund capital improvement projects. Again, by using a hybrid approach of debt, of cash reserves, and what, as, as well as looking at some tax increment reinvestment zone options. Um, just a couple of quick note, uh, notations here on the general fund revenues. Um, I, we've already talked about our maintenance and operation, our debt rate. The certified values of our property values came in at one point seven billion, which was more than a twelve and a half percent increase over last year's property taxes uh, or the tax valuations. Sales taxes were budgeted, um, uh, at a three percent increase over our current year. In our current year, we're projecting about four point two million dollars, which you'll see in a few minutes, is a significant increase over where we were just a few years ago. Those are the major revenue ser- sources in the budget. I won't, I won't spend a lot of time on the other revenue items here. But you can see the total proposed revenue, um, projected is the purple. That's, that's how we're expecting to finish out this fiscal year. Uh, the green bar right next to the purple, to the, uh, to the right of the purple bar is our proposed revenues at twelve point three nine, or three four nine million dollars. This is the breakdown. Property tax, again, is the largest share at forty-two percent. Thirty-five percent comes from sales tax, and again, that's a growing portion of the, of the revenue pie chart you see here. Franchise fees are third at eight percent. Uh, this, this kind of shows you a little bit longer-term, uh, look of revenues and, and the, and the trajectory of each revenue. You see property taxes continue to grow, again, because property values grow. Uh, our property tax rate has remained the same, so that growth is really just a reflection of increased values. Sales taxes have grown significantly, and we do, uh, expect that there'll be still moderate growth in sales tax revenues. Those are the two largest. The rest are franchise fees and building permits. Uh, I mentioned this earlier. This is just the, um, the reflection of the taxable assessed value increase from fiscal year. You see, uh, and really, there's been double-digit increases really in the last five years on a regular basis, ten percent, fourteen percent, uh, nine and a half percent, and then nine point three, and then this last year at twelve point seven four percent. So significant valuation growth is leading to increased growth in, in terms of your property tax revenues, even at a flat tax rate. Sales tax revenues obviously have, have grown significantly, really just even in the last eighteen months. And if you look at the dark blue line, which is the line that is the, the tallest in each one of the month categories year-to-date, we don't have the last three months of the fiscal year yet, but you can just see, uh, we're averaging over, you know, close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, I'm sorry, a month in sales tax growth, where it wasn't too many years ago, where we were barely averaging about two hundred thousand dollars a month. So there's significant growth in sales tax as well, which is, which is again, is helping us as an organization address needed services in the community such as road infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, um, uh, capital needs for the departments, um, and also, you know, a way to fund, uh, other types of capital projects. Again, just another chart that really shows the increase in the trajectory of the increased monthly sales tax, uh, payments and the trends, and we do expect that can, to continue upward. Maybe not as, quite as sharp of as an incline, but, but an increase nevertheless. Uh, in, in general fund increases, really, we've, most of our budget is essentially personnel services. We are in the service business, and so, uh, we'll see a chart here in just a moment that shows just exactly how much of the budget goes, uh, goes to fund personnel, wages, benefits, salaries, et cetera. Uh, this is just the total fund, general fund expenses as we projected out over the next several years. Uh, you'll see we're, we're currently, the purple, uh, bar is our, uh, proposed budget, uh, at twelve point three nine, three four nine million dollars, which is slightly less than what we're projecting to finish up, um, this fiscal year. Proposed expenses in terms of by department, just about half of all of our expenses go to public safety services, police, fire, emergency medical services, followed by non-departmental, uh, which is kind of a catch-all, which helps fund a wide variety of projects that, that support the entire town, uh, operating departments, certainly capital outlays, uh, development services and parks are the next largest expenditure items. But public safety by and large is generally about half of our budget. Here you can see the labor and benefits, and capital outlays are the largest expense items in our budget. And, um, you'll see here in the, I believe it's kind of the orange bar there, the fourth bar from the right is the proposed budget. Um, we are proposing an increase in our labor and benefits, uh, because we've just recently completed a compensation and benefit study by a company out of Phoenix, Arizona, who's been doing this for many, many years for, uh, cities through all, all around North Texas, as well as throughout the United States of America. And one of, one of the major finding is that, uh, the town, uh, is generally at the bottom of the pool of our competitive cities. We have about thirteen cities we compare ourselves to, and we are generally either last or second to last in most of the pay categories by position, uh, and also in terms of some benefits. I want to give a lot of credit to the mayor and council. Earlier this spring, you did, um, you did make a motion or did, uh, direct staff to go ahead and implement one of the findings, which is to provide some sort of subsidy for, uh, family healthcare benefits. Um, our family healthcare premiums were one hundred percent paid for by the employee with zero subsidy by the town. And so, um, we had a, I believe, a July first deadline to submit that change, and so we did provide a fifty percent uh, subsidy for our family healthcare premiums for our employees, and that is reflected in these, in these expense line items here in the proposed budget. Uh, I mentioned the capital, well, let me finish one other thing on labor and benefits. Generally, most public organizations, certainly in North Texas, you'll find that about seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of their budget is labor, uh, is salaries and, and benefits, and we are actually below that mark. And I think even in our projected budgets over the next few years, will continue to be, uh, a smaller portion of the budget. And I think that's just a reflection of having a very lean staff, um, and doing more with less. There are numerous people who wear multiple hats in this organization, and I think that has provided a, a really long-term fiscal savings to the taxpayers for many, many years. So, um, so kudos to the previous, uh, staff and mayor and council, uh, current and, and past for, um, being good fiscal stewards of the tax dollars. Uh, so even with implementation of the labor, uh, increases, we do have a five percent merit pool and a five percent market pool built into the budget. And even with those expenses, we still are probably below market in terms of what portion we spend on labor and benefits out of our total general fund operating budget. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about debt service. We are, uh, proposing a debt service payment of two point nine million dollars. Um, tax-supported debt is actually nets out at two point four because we are, we are shifting four hundred thousand dollars in debt to the water and sewer fund. And, uh, there's thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, which is paid for out of the four A fund. So you actually net out the general fund, the debt service payment is two point four, six million dollars. And we'll, we'll get into what exactly that debt payment gets us in terms of capital projects. This just shows a history of, of our debt, uh, tax-supported payments and, uh, and a projection of what we're looking at, assuming no other debt is issued this year. The two point four million dollars does include, uh, one point two million dollar tax note sale to implement phase two of the Damaic roadway project. Uh, prior to this budget season, we were, we were short by two point two million dollars to fund the phase two of the roadwork program that you all had identified, uh, over the last couple of years. And so with the short-term tax note of one point two million dollars, uh, we will be able to fully fund the second phase of our Damaic roadway project. And that is reflected in our twenty twenty-three, uh, tax-supported debt payment here. We have the general fund economic, well, that's, uh, Mayor, I think I'll just stop right there, um, unless you have any, if the council has any questions on the general fund portion. If not, I'll go ahead and finish the rest of the, uh, the presentation, and we also have the four B budget presentation as well as part of the public hearing.
Okay, council, any questions for, uh, Mr. Jones? Okay, proceed.
Okay, this is just the, uh, there's several other funds that the town has. Um, there are very few changes to the funds. Uh, I think the biggest change we'll, we'll, we'll cover in the capital improvement fund and then the four B fund, but the rest of the funds are fairly quick, so we'll go with them fairly quickly. This is the general fund economic development fund. Uh, there is one point three six million dollars remaining in that fund. We are transferring or proposing to transfer with this proposed budget. Five hundred thousand dollars also into the Damaic capital improvement project account, uh, to help, uh, make up some of that funding deficit, the two point two million dollar funding deficit. So, um, otherwise, that is the only change to the general fund, uh, economic development fund. In terms of the water and sewer fund, uh, most of the, the fund is comprised of water revenue and sewer revenue, water revenue being the largest. We have six point nine million dollars in revenue proposed. Trash service does come out of this fund. As town manager, I will, I will probably be proposing that we pull the trash service into the general fund next budgeting process, but for this year, we'll, we're proposing to leave it as is. That's about five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, to the fund, but again, majority of the revenue comes from water and sewer, uh, water and sewer fees. This just shows, uh, the proposed budget for fiscal year, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three at seven point seven million dollars in revenue, uh, eight point five million dollars in expenses, but that also includes depreciation. So really, it's a balanced budget. If you look at our working capital at the end of the year, uh, current year, we're projecting at five point zero seven million dollars in working, in working capital. And at the end of next fiscal year, we'll, we're proposing that we'll have five point zero eight million dollars. So it's practically a balanced budget, um, factoring in, uh, after factoring in some depreciation. And again, the major change- And again, the major change is in, and this is just a five-year plan, I wanted to flip ahead and show you, we're doing this for each one of our major funds, and you'll continue to see this projection grow. I believe it'll be a great tool for, for not only for staff, but for mayor and council to, to look at the town's finances and as you make decisions about capital improvement projects or other priorities, you'll be able to see the impact of those decisions that you make over the long term. So this is a, just a, you've seen this just recently, I think our public works director showed you this slide when we were talking about water conservation efforts. I just want to show the July twenty twenty-two and even June twenty twenty-two, the water consumption, probably some of the highest water consumptions we've, we've had here in Sunnyvale in, gosh, several years. And so that is going to be reflected in very strong revenues, but conversely, there's also very strong expenses through our, through our water and wastewater providers as well. So total revenues here at seven point seven, five million dollars being proposed, and you can see here by category, most of those revenues I mentioned before is the blue part of the pie is our water revenues. Thirty-four percent of the revenue comes from the sewer charges, and then you see trash at seven percent, and then there's some other minor fees that make up a very small portion of the budget. Again, you can see the, the revenues, just a trend of the water revenues and the trend of the sewer revenues. Again, very strong growth, obviously this year because of the drought-like conditions. Despite conservation, I think there was still a lot of strong water use and, and then of course, there's rate changes as well from our providers, and we'll get into that when we cover expenses here in just a moment. Total expenses projected for this current year at seven point four million dollars, eight point five million dollars proposed. We have rate increases passed on by our contractual providers for water and sewer services. We do have some minor increases in, in our salary and benefits just because that portion of our total operating budget of expenses in the water fund is much smaller than the general fund proportionately. We do also have the four million, the four hundred thousand dollar debt payment that will be coming out of this that I mentioned before, instead of going to the debt service fund, which is part of the reason for the large increase. And then of course, we have our contractual providers who pass on their increases each year for water and sewer. These are our expenses. Again, sixty-five percent of our expenses go to our water and sewer, or I'm sorry, our water side of the equation when it comes to, I'm sorry, the contractual services is the blue and that covers our water and sewer providers and, and the fees that we have to pay them as the pass-through. Again, this is a historical that kind of shows our, just the trend in terms of our expenses, and you see our contractual services is the largest line item by far. And then the next fund mayor will go over will be the four B economic development fund. I know this was talked about at our budget workshop, I believe at the end of August or maybe it was the first in September, but, and I believe Burton Barr will have a quick presentation. There were some questions from the last council meeting, so we will, we'll hopefully have those addressed for you in this presentation.
One more. Let's go one more. One more. Next slide, please. Well, it wasn't showing. Okay, one more, please. Right, I understand. Okay. All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Just, I think last time there was questions about what the breakdown was. Revenues are budgeted at one, one point, one, one million eight hundred eighty-two thousand and fifty dollars. And of that, sales tax receipts are one million four hundred and forty-two thousand, interest earned of ten thousand fifty dollars, and Dallas County accounts receivable for the reimbursement share of Rails Trails design. That's what that four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is showing. So that's, that's the total revenues. Expenses were budgeted at two million six hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four That would include labor benefits for EDC director, part-time administrative assistant, business incentives, town beautification, support of Parks Department budget. And that leaves us with a total fund balance of one million. It's projected to be one million two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Next slide, please. This was a breakdown of the incentives that are currently committed. I know there was questions about the dollar amounts. Those shown over there on the right side, those are the amounts that were budgeted for this year. We've got the story at Long Creek Athletic Club, another one for the Athletic Club. Some of those projects are, are not online. The term agreement, the term limits in there, as you can see, for the job creation and retention, obviously that business has to be online for a year before that incentive would ever be paid, and it's not anticipated to be online in the next budget cycle. So, so a total of, for those incentives is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide, please, Erica. This is our sales tax reimbursement. These are the amounts and the businesses that we have budgeted. We have a total of forty thousand dollars budgeted for sales tax reimbursements. And just kind of bring your attention to the amount that's committed. I know the question last time was how do we arrive at that four hundred and sixty thousand dollar amount, and that's what those add up to. We also have outstanding commitments, and those are listed there. Next slide, please. These are the grant projects that, that are currently out there.
Hey Burton, can you go back to the previous chart for a second? I'm assuming the vacation should be the same as the carnies, right?
Yes.
Is that a, we only pay nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six to date, forty-three thousand, is that, that's based on sales tax, I'm assuming, right?
It is.
Is there a limit on how far we'll wait, like ten year, five year, or?
Yeah, there, there's a term, there are term limits on all this. So essentially, they have to, they have to earn the money before we would pay back any sort of reimbursement.
Which one is it, GND sports, you have the satellite table?
Yes, sir.
What about the Whataburger? Is that already done?
Part of it is, yes, sir.
So there is no line here for that?
This is only what's in this budget. There was a portion that was already, an incentive that was already paid out, and then there's additional, there's additional sales tax reimbursement from the, would have been the, I guess, the type A general fund. So again, these are the grants, the one on the top there, the Dallas County, that is the total of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That was, that should be available in twenty-three. That's for the design of Rails Trails project, the entire corridor. Our match would be the four hundred and thirty thousand, that's the reimbursable portion that showed up in the revenue side in that earlier slide. And then the one that we just applied for was for the section around the school, and we should have determination by the Regional Transportation Council in December of this year, and that would be the match if we were, if we were funded. Next. And so these are some of the major projects that are within this budget. Updating the Economic Development Strategic Plan, monument signage, concept plans, the Glazier Barn improvements, and there's the regional Rails Trails design and the explanation with that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Collins Road beautification is already accounted for? Some of the projects we talked about, the community engagement amphitheater type of thing, is that all budgeted?
Not, the community, not in the four B budget, but in the general fund, the community engagement as far as the
The amphitheater, the theater behind?
The citizen survey, I'm sorry?
The movie theater, the community
Oh, the commu-
The projector and whatnot for the, the park, movies in the park?
Oh, yes, yes, and those are budgeted, yes. The increase for special events is, is included in the budget, yes, sir.
Additional questions for Burton or Jones? Okay. Mr. Kevin?
Quick question for Jeff. So inflation seems to be getting bad over the last few months. I mean, I'm sure that's been planned in the budget, inflation issues, things like that.
We, we do have a growth factor in the budget as well as in the out-years that we're projecting. We are, we are projecting eight to ten percent inflationary increases in a lot of our line items. And then I believe fuel, we were looking at a sixty percent increase. And I'm looking at Phyllis and Liz, there, and a ten percent increase in utilities, I believe is, utilities was ten percent. So yes, we do have some inflationary factors built into the budget as well.
Okay, thank you.
Are there additional questions for staff? Okay, what is next?
Mayor, I believe we have a few more funds to go through, including the capital improvement fund, so
Let's do it.
Pull that other presentation back up. Thank you, Erica. Capital Improvement Fund, we have a wide variety of funding source of our capital improvement fund, and some of the projects are listed here. Obviously, Road Damaic, we've talked about. We're adding more than two million dollars out of this proposed budget to help fund phase two of the Damaic roadway project, which was previously unfunded. There are some other projects listed there. Burton just talked about Rails to Trails there, and so, and of course, the fire station is currently under construction. But we are proposing to spend four point three seven five million dollars on capital projects, and just showing you the, the total there at the bottom, but I'll go back here, and that includes six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars being budgeted for what we're calling Phase One B of Collins Road, which is the landscape, hardscape and irrigation for the medians and even some of the right-of-way areas of both Collins south of US eighty as well as north of eighty. And we do have an engineering expense that we'll be bringing back to council here fairly soon about some increased engineering design fees for this particular portion. You also have an item on your agenda later that's related to this, but we are, and this is a worst-case scenario number, staff has directed our engineering consultant to, let's look at three different levels of landscape, hardscape, design for those corridors. This is the main entrance and really the face of the community that when people drive through Sunnyvale, and we, we're proposing to extend the beautification efforts that the council has invested in the past at that intersection of eighty and Collins and kind of bring that up the corridor through the median entryways. And, and so six twenty-five is probably the highest level. Certainly, this line item could, could decrease pending council's review next fiscal year. We are proposing a design fee of five hundred thousand dollars for a multi-use facility, but also including a potential new animal shelter and public works and parks facility down there as well. So that design fee is covered in our capital improvement plan for next year as proposed is, and of course, we have the Glazier Tract. Money will roll forward, there's five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that project. You'll also see some presentations on that coming up here within the next month on some, some initial work on that. And then what we've been talking about is funding the roadway project, phase two of the Damaic at two point seven five million. That amount actually allows us to not only complete all the roads in phase two, but actually bring a couple of the roadways that were in phase three and bring them into phase two as well, so that we can get some of these deteriorating road conditions fixed sooner rather than later. And then I'll just make a comment to, obviously with the drought conditions this summer and then really in the last two, two and a half weeks, the mass, you know, extensive amount of rain, I think we've had almost a foot, not quite a foot and a half of rain. We're going to see the asphalt roads deteriorate at a much faster rate, so we are proposing to bring road biotics back in and have another evaluation done of a roadway system, and that, that is built into the budget as well. It's actually a fairly nominal expense for the, for the service they provide, but we, we want to go in and update our road study as well now that we have the funding available to, to address a lot of these roads. But I do, do expect that the base values will just continue to exacerbate much more than they already are right now because of the recent weather events. So this is the capital improvement fund as it's projected or proposed for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then you can see some of the out-years. Obviously, we have other projects that are unfunded. We have a lot of unfunded projects, millions and millions of dollars of unfunded capital improvement projects, which again, is why staff was proposing that we keep our tax rate level this year and, and so we can look in, into our strategic planning workshops next spring and start to identify and prioritize which one of these capital improvement projects do you want to prioritize in terms of timing and phasing, and then also what mix of funding? Are we going to use long-term debt? Are we going to use a hybrid approach of cash and long-term debt, or even the tax increment, reinvestment zones that we've talked about? So that is the proposed capital improvement fund. Impact Fee Fund, I'll go over very quickly. There's not a lot of change there in the impact fees. We are projecting a hundred permits, residential permits, and so that is what, what we're budgeting for impact fees. And you can see roadway, roadway impact fees would generate about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Water and sewer impact fees, about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars based on the hundred lots. We are, I think, being somewhat conservative, but, but just based on feedback we've had from the home developers, they still continue to believe that they're going to continue to find demand for the housing, so they'll continue to build their projects. You have one of those projects on, on the agenda later tonight. So we certainly could see more permit activity than this, but we wanted to be somewhat cautious because of the recessionary potential for the next, the next quarter or the next year. Homestead Amenities Fund, again, there's just interest earned that's coming into this fund, and that is, that is really, the current fund balance is at three hundred and forty-two thousand, so there's really no significant change in the Homestead Amenities Fund. Special Revenue Fund covers a wide variety of special revenues. You'll see, it's just all over the place, but we do have some, a wide variety, including grant funding here, including the American Rescue Plan as well as other special revenues. So, and we are expecting, we were expecting another ARP payment for the American Rescue Plan in the, to the tune of close to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it was supposed to come in in the month of August, but we have not received that to date, so we are, we're investigating where that payment is and what the holdup is. That'll probably be the biggest change to the special revenue fund, is just the increase in the federal grant monies through the American Rescue Plan. Peg Fund, there is no change there. There remains a little over seventy thousand dollars. There are no peg fees that are currently charged on the cable bills to many of our customers in the town of Sunnyvale, so there's no revenue growth or no additional fee growth in the peg fund, and so there's really no change at all whatsoever in the peg fund. And then I think, so mayor and council, that covers really all of our funds at a very high level. I apologize that we kind of went through that fairly quickly, so I'm happy to go back to any particular fund if you have other questions. I believe the staff report also detailed a lot of the expense items in the agenda packet as well, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have this time, Eric.
Counsel, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up for public comments on item number eleven. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come and forward and speak to the council on item number eleven, you may come, you may do so at this time. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 11. Rachel, there is no decision, right? We just hold a public hearing tonight, right? And we'll be back on Thursday, September 15th at 7:00 PM. For the first reading on the budget, annual budget as well as the tax rate. The council will be back on, again, Friday at 9:00 AM for the second reading of the budget and the, and, okay. So there'll be two more meetings, one on the Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Friday at 9:00 AM.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I make a comment on Thursday's meeting, I just want to clarify, because of the timing of the Open Meetings Act and the public notices, we have posted those agendas for both Thursday and Friday, uh, because Thursday started at seven, or is projected to start at seven, and so, uh, we proposed and attached the budget as presented tonight. Um, if there were changes, then we would certainly bring back an amended budget on second reading. Um, and so I just want to make that very clear, that the budget that is attached for Thursday's agenda is exactly the budget that was presented tonight and also the budget that was covered at our budget workshop a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the only other thing I'll mention too is there will be a, a separate ordinance for the sale of tax notes, because I did mention the 1.2 million dollars in tax, short-term tax notes as part of our debt payment to fund the second phase of the Damaic will also be included on that agenda as well. So just, uh, just wanted to clarify that, so that is out there, already published online.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, any discussions or any additional direction for staff? Okay, if not, I'm going to move on to the item number 12. Hold a public hearing, discuss and consider and act upon the final direction to staff on the 2022-23 proposed tax rate. I think, Mr. Jones, you've covered most of it. Do you have any additional comments?
Sorry, Mayor, yeah, just one other comment, and I, I mentioned this when we talked about the, um, tax rate, uh, and the, a variety of tax rate the council had to choose from in terms of direction for staff. Uh, we have, I think we just have one slide for this item. If you click, there we go, there it is. Um, I mentioned the de minimis rate, these were all of the tax rates, certainly in any variety thereof. Um, but the maximum tax rate that we, without voter approval would be, uh, the 50.4255 cents, um, which is 10% higher than our current tax rate. The de minimis tax rate was a tax rate for a mate that included an additional $500,000 in revenue generated for the maintenance and operations. Um, so you can see that our, our current tax rate and our proposed tax rate are certainly below those two levels. And as I mentioned before, it's 5% increase over the no new revenue rate, um, but it is a 10% uh, lower rate than the voter-approved rate. Uh, so people will see an increase in their tax bill, um, but it is because of the valuation growth and not because of the gross, the growth in the tax rate. And so just want to be very clear about that. Um, but this is the proposed tax rate, um, and this is the public hearing, uh, for the tax rate.
Okay, let me open up for public comments, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 12, you may do so at this time. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, any discussions on this topic? And, Mr. Jones, there are news out there on social media that town is increasing the tax rate, but, but we are holding the tax rate same as last year, correct?
Yes, sir, and Mayor, uh, based on, uh, one of our work sessions, uh, and council direction was, in the past, we've always, uh, we've always publicly noticed the voter approval rate, which is the highest rate possible without going to an election. And so that is how we noticed the tax rate, although the budget was built on a, on the proposed existing tax rate. So the notice that is out there is a notice that represents the 50 cents, but that is not what the budget is based on. Uh, and that was intended to give the council and staff flexibility, uh, as we went through the budget deliberations. If you wanted to change something or fund more projects or issue more debt and cause an increase in the tax rate, then that gave you the flexibility to do that. We obviously did not have to use that, so even though the posted rate, uh, rate on our website is the voter-approved rate, the actual rate will be the .453 cents, and I believe, um, if I remember, that, believe the notice on our website says it's a 25% increase in taxes, and the actual increase is closer to 12% based on the .453. And again, the taxes increased because of the valuations as well.
The tax rate remained same, okay?
Correct.
Counsel, additional discussions? So Rachel, again, here on 12, also it's a discussion, not an action item, correct?
It's discussion and then provide direction, you don't have to take a vote, but you have to provide, provide staff with direction.
Counsel, any additional direction for staff? Okay, moving on to item number 13, discuss, consider and act upon placing an ordinance adopting the tax rate on the agenda for first reading on Thursday, September 15th, 2022, and for second reading and final adoption on Friday, September 16th, 2022. That be Rachel?
Mayor, that, that's me, and this is just required through our, uh, the, the state truth and taxation laws as part of the budgeting process.
I have one thing. Um, I do know there are some absences from these meetings. Uh, the tax code requires a 60% vote of the council. Um, that is five people, so we will need five for each of these meetings.
Okay. I think counsel, tied it for all seven. No? You'll be out? You'll be out? I'll be, Mr. Egan? Mr. Clark and Mr. Allen Finch? You'll be here? He's, uh, still on different timeframe, time, time.
I can try, I can try to be here.
No, that's, it's not a joke, it's, it's, it's-
If you're not, we can't approve.
I know he's joking, but it's, can I joke here? I got it, we need all five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not joking.
Yeah, I have to have five of you.
Yeah, so at least we got your five here, Mr. Mr. Freeman, Mr. Eldridge will not be, okay?
I, I can be here, I'm confirming.
No, I can't be, you need to be here.
I will be here, confirming.
So, so we don't need an action, or do we need an action? Do I take public comments on this, Mr. Mr. McDonald, okay? All right, uh, can I have a motion, item number 13, please? Can I have a motion to approve item number 13?
Motion to approve item 13 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Clark to approve item number 13. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed. Seven, I'm moving on to item number 14. Consider approval of a preliminary plat of, for 10 residential lots and one open space for totaling plus or minus 13.9 acres zoned plant development PD located generally at 400 Pascal Road. Philip, that be you?
Uh, yes, sir, the, the subject property is located at 400 Pascal Road and is roughly 13.9 acres. Uh, the, the property is part of that, uh, planned development Stone Canyon PD, PRO, uh, 413, uh, and is currently vacant. Uh, to the south of the property is transmission lines, zone, general business, um, and is surrounded on all, on all other sides, uh, with sections of this planned development. Uh, in 2021, a concept plan amendment was presented to, uh, presented and approved by P and Z in Town Council. Uh, this concept plan revised setbacks, increased lot size and reduced lot width, widths for the lots. Uh, it also changed up some of the, the layout of the, the planned development. The, the owner plans the preliminary plat, the two phases shown, and then, uh, come back with a final plat for each phase separately as each section gets completed, uh, for any new subdivision of that land that may occur other than what's shown tonight. Uh, preliminary plat will, would need to be approved before, uh, final plat, showing the subdivision proposed to be approved by Town Council with a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on August 17th, 2022 and voted to recommend approval of the, the request, subject to no conditions. If y'all have any other questions, feel free. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Uh, the applicant is here, would you like to add anything, sir? Thank you, Mr. Cash. Uh, let me open up for public comments, if there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to speak to the council on item number 13. I'm sorry, item number 14, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, any discussion on item number 14?
Mayor, I have one question, and it's really moderate, but, uh, the last development we had seemed to be missing internet, so is there some staff check on internet? Do we have something to, to be sure that's put into the community development?
Uh, if Lyle wants to chime in, he can, but to my understanding is that internet is to be ran by specific providers, it's not on the town at all.
That's not a town responsibility then? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Jenkins, any comments, sir?
Um, no, sir, I, Philip is correct, that is on, that is on the developer. I do normally issue a right-of-way permit, uh, for the work that needs to be done in the right-of-way to get that installed, but that would be the limit of our involvement in it under normal circumstances.
Mr. Developer, do you have any comments?
No.
Internet is going to be there or not, it's going to be a problem? Internet would, would be an issue or not an issue? Say it again? Can you come forward, sir? Thank you, yeah. Since you are here, go ahead and say your name and address for the record, since you are here.
K-Paul Cash, 128 Johnson Road. Internet is already there to cap rock, so in that respect, it shouldn't be a big deal. The two lots on the, on the other cul-de-sac, they'll just have to extend it up that little street, but internet is already in the neighborhood, so. But I feel your pain, we, we dealt with that when we put Phase Four in back in the day. I think they had a copper line or something like that in at the time, and that was all that was available. And so later on, when people came in and wanted to work out their homes, they got providers to get out there. Anyway, thanks, guys, appreciate your consideration of this tonight.
Thanks, K-Paul.
Answer your question? Okay, count traditional questions or discussions on this topic? I had a couple of questions and, and Philip was able to answer my question, thank you for that. Okay, if there are no other questions, can I have a motion, item number 14?
Motion approved, item number 14 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Egan to approve item number 14 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? The additional discussions? If not, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Thank you very much, Mr. Cash. Uh, item number 15, discuss, consider and act upon a proposal from Clark Electric Incorporated, the amount of $89,029 with installation of wiring and related infrastructure to provide power to the plant decorative light poles in the median of Collins Road between US Highway 80 and Trip Road. That be Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir. Um, this item is, uh, as the proposal states, for Clark Electric to come out to the prop, to come out to Collins Road, install the needed aluminum wiring to get power to our proposed upcoming decorative, uh, light poles to be placed in the median of Collins Road and around the roundabout at Collins and Trip. Um, we had previously had an engineering firm put together a design for the wiring to make sure that it was correct and adequate to serve the poles, and they did that, and this, uh, proposal is done with that design in mind. Um, they would be able to get out to the site within just a few weeks of getting an official notice to proceed, and we would have the poles in place at that time, so they could just simply come into the poles with the handholds and get the wires in place, and then we'd be able to get the poles on at that point. Um, that having been said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
In the open of our public comments, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 15, you may do so. No one is coming forward, so close the public comments, counsel, any question for staff, or any discussions?
Mayor, I have one. Lyle, did you say aluminum wiring?
Uh, yes, sir, that is correct. The proposal from Clark Electric gave us two alternatives. One was aluminum, one was the, I guess, more traditional copper wiring. Copper wiring is more expensive and there is also concerns about security of the, somebody coming out and making off with the copper wires. Uh, aluminum is something that Encore is moving to, it's something that they've approved. So because it is an allowable wiring material and it's less cost, that seemed to be the obvious solution to go with.
This is pulled in conduit, right, underground?
Well, the conduits were already put in place as part of the original roadway construction, this would just be running the actual wires.
And just for what it's worth, aluminum is, while it was used in housing quite a bit back in the seventies and eighties, there are methodologies today that are used that prevent the issues of burned connections that we, those, a lot of those, uh, facilities had. So aluminum actually is used quite a bit and has been for overhead stuff that's not inside walls.
Okay, count traditional questions or discussions? Okay, if none, I, we'll, we'll talk, yes, sir.
Councilmember Egan, no, no issues? You're the expert. Aluminum is good, no, no issues, okay?
He's the resident, he's the resident, resident expert. Okay, if there are no other discussions, can I have a motion, item number 15?
Motion approved, item 15.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge, second by Freeman, to approve item number 15 as presented. Everyone heard the motion and the additional discussions? If none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Moving on to item number 16. Consider and act upon resolution 2022-21 approving development and facilities agreement between the town of Sunnyvale and TF Stony Creek LP for Phase 4C of the Stony Creek Development and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Jones, or that be Mr. Jenkins?
Mayor, I'll just add one quick comment, but, yeah, Lyle will present this item, but you, you all recently, um, re-received and, or reviewed and approved very similar agreements on a different phase for Stony Creek. This is basically the exact same thing on another phase, uh, regarding landscaping and, um, and the developer, uh, for Stony Creek, Mr. Campbell is here as well.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Uh, yes, sir, and, and just as Jeff said, um, this is substantially similar to the agreement that council looked at recently for Phase Three, uh, yes, excuse me, Phase 3B of Stony Creek. Uh, one thing I would mention to you is when 3B was done, uh, and also even Phase 4B prior to that, the escrow was, amount was in the amount of 110 of the cost, excuse me, 110% of the proposed cost of the improvements. Um, at that time, uh, y'all had asked some questions about whether 110% was adequate, but that was the maximum out that our, our ordinance provided for. However, the developer on their own initiative for this current one, they voluntarily up that amount to 120% to show that they're, you know, very serious about getting these improvements fixed, or excuse me, getting them installed. And the other thing I would mention is, um, the first of the three phases of Stony Creek that we've been working with them on, Phase 4B, uh, we had done an agreement with them, those landscaping and hardscape improvements are essentially all in, in place and complete now. Um, the second one, the more recent one in Phase 3B, those are not yet in place, but one of the reasons for doing these agreements was to allow that to be put in a later time after most of the home construction is done. No, homes are yet under construction in Phase 3B, so therefore those have not been done yet, but we would anticipate that those will be done in fairly short order, and if, uh, Mr. Campbell wants to speak to that more, I'll, I'll defer to him. So, uh, they have, they have performed in, in accordance with the terms of the agreement on previous phases, and we would certainly have every reason to believe that this would continue. So, uh, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Campbell, you've been patient, would you like to come forward? Yeah, I can hear you, but okay, thank you. Thank you for, uh, for, for increasing your escrow. With everything going on, we had to protect the interest of the town, so appreciate you doing that. Hopefully you don't need to use it. Okay, let me open up for public comments, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to speak to the council on item number 16, you may come forward at this time. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comment council, any questions or discussion for staff or the applicant? Okay, if none, I call for a motion, item number 16.
Motion approved, item 16.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge, approve item number 16 as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion and the additional discussions? All in favor signify, all opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Number 17, consider and act upon resolution 2022-20 approving an escrow agreement between the town of Sunnyvale, Foster American Title Company LLC and TF Stony Creek LP for Phase 4C of the Stony Creek Development and authorize the town- and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir. This is very much substantially the same as the previous agenda item. The previous agenda item was for the development agreement. This item here is for the escrow, the actual escrow itself. So as far as the terms of it and what it's all about, it's basically the same thing. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Let me open up for public comments, item number 17. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, any questions or discussions on 17? If none, I call for a motion.
Motion to prove item 17 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Eldred to approve 17 as presented. Everyone heard the motion or the additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed. Seven, oh. Mayor and council, because for staff updates, I did items. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, I have an item. There are many, many people, at least a number of people complaining about the Garland sewer order. It's, it's, it's... Sewer plant, yeah, yeah. It's wastewater treatment plants, it's just really horrible. And there was an email from them today saying that nothing changed. And I don't, I don't buy that. Again, either intentional happening or not, but it's just, it's a really horrible smell. So I don't, I know we passed an ordinance, I don't know that's burned as your time of before.
So this is just a time to put items on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Not a time to go into discussion?
Good point, thank you. Another agenda item on that, please. Counsel, additional agenda items? Okay, if none, I call for a motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Clark to adjourn. All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed. Seven, oh. Time is 9:26, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, council, thank you, staff. Thank you, residents, for attending tonight's meeting.